June 23rd, 2025 for the New Windsor Planning Commission. As always, we work off of an agenda based on information that primarily I have from the town or from members of the community. And the agenda went out last week. And first order of business is the review and approval of the June 2nd, 2025. Does anybody have any questions? Comments on the minutes?
No, from my notes, it appears that the minutes seem to be in order. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second that motion.
Motion by Drew, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
It was all signify, so five zero. Again, Drew and Kevin. All right, the next order of business was this plan document that Brenda from Carroll County Planning had sent last week and asked to be on the agenda to come and chat about this. And I don't know, again, not having seen email, maybe Javier said both he and Brenda were going to be down MML. I don't know. But obviously, they're not here, so we will move on from that one. But it was at Brenda's request, and I'll reach out to her and find out what happened and see if she wants to be on there next time. And there were a couple of documents that came out. And it has to do with the water resource element, the overview for New Windsor. Yeah, that's right, there were three things. There was an advisory council and then documents. But she specifically said she wanted to come and talk with us, so I apologize. Well, we're in the red, too, in this community newsletter that's out there. Showing how freedom is in good shape. You, you just part of the county is not. Additional water resource. This would have been really timely. The showing with our others who weren't able to make it. Next item on the agenda was the Springdale Master Plan Review. And there was some pretty detailed information that they did send us.
This is based on 2023, though, not?
Well, yeah, but it hasn't improved. I'm sorry, when you say this, you're talking about the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know. That's correct, Dave, right? The water situation, there's been no new findings of water and?
No, and I'm not exactly sure what they're basing this number on.
It's a bigger number than I'd seen.
I'm not sure what they're basing that on.
Well, I'm sure she will be here or Javier will be here to speak to us in the near future. Let's see. There was a button, but taking a push over here to get that one.
TV?
Yeah. Oh, there it is, that's right. I guess it made just the power button.
Mine might have been too far.
I was just gonna pull up the master plan here to... I don't think, did anybody print that out themselves? Oh, looks like you did.
Yeah, they printed it out. I had a copy here.
Oh, you have the copies here? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just thought it was the verbiage. Oh, okay.
Copy was highlighted. Some items still highlighted.
And again, this has been, I want to say, a year and a half. Let's see, Neil, Wayne, somebody else. I think we should, yeah, that's right, Dave. I'm sorry, Dave. Because we were kind of scattered. We weren't all sitting around together. And it was, in my professional life, I know it as a dog and pony show where, you know, they'll bring in the experts and they'll talk about, you know, the vision, the wonder of what they can do. And it looked great. Really, there were lots of appealing visual items that they showed there. And this was a presentation to faculty and I want to say board members or whatever they'll call their governing body. And it was a 10-year plan. I recall it was like $100 million, Dave, does that sound about right?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Would have, and again, a 10-year plan doesn't just happen. Obviously, there's fundraising that will have to go through and I'm, it's a private school, so I'm not exactly sure how their, what their plan is to go about it. And there was some modest discussion about utilities, but there was nothing real significant at that meeting because that really wasn't the purpose. It was for them to talk with the document and say, hey, this is our vision of where we're headed.
Are they allowed to drill for wells on their own property?
Well?
With, because they're within town limits, right?
Dave can address that because it's not, they're leasing.
Oh, well, they're leasing both of them? I thought they bought?
They have up top of the hill in Maine.
Right, I thought they bought that outright.
The old service center.
Yes. Yes.
The main academic area down here is not.
It has not. I don't know, they were several times now supposed to, and I don't know what the county and them, but it has not been, my understanding has not been purchased. And I believe?
You were speaking of the main campus, right?
Yeah, which is where most of this is occurring.
Yeah, yes, in this phase, these phases, yes.
So would they be allowed to drill for water on, I wouldn't?
I believe the answer to that is no.
That's what I was thinking as well, but I was trying, I was trying to come up with alternatives.
It seems like we've had discussions about that, and I think the answer to that is, and I can't tell you all the reasons why, but the answer, I believe is?
I would think because it's within town limits, and that would be one thing in the town supplies water, so you're not allowed to bypass the town for your water, whether you have capacity or not. That would make sense because we have to control our town. Okay.
I, that's where it's nice having Michelle. I don't know how it works with?
And based on the letter from?
That's county-owned property, the building, and I'm assuming?
The school is?
Yeah, yes.
So there's a possibility if they bought that from the county, that's not part of the town?
Is it, the building is the county's, Dave, and the property is the town's? Is that?
It's a property within the town limits.
The property and the building is owned by the county, but it's within the town.
Within the town limits.
It's the same thing. That's the same thing as the building.
We have agreements with the county right now for some water exploration on that property that I believe the school would not sign to allow us to do that while they were there.
That's not too smart on their part.
There was a lot of stuff going on, and I don't remember all the specifics, but?
So when they took over that lease, those rights were taken away from them and us?
Not from us.
No. Are they kidding? They were included?
They don't have, they don't have the ability at this point per the county to do anything like that.
And that was what I was trying to find out. Okay.
This is camera select. I don't know where.
I was trying to find out, okay.
Last month. On the shelf.
Yeah, that says camera. It's got some focus.
Oh, there we go. That's probably the one.
That one right in front of us?
Yeah.
Don't worry if I turned anything off.
Thank you, Dave.
There you go.
Watch a little TV.
There we go.
Turn anything off because the cameras, they all went like straight.
Okay. Well, it clearly was not just going to happen.
Well, I understand that, but the main concern sounds to me like we don't have the, we can't support the utilities they would need at this current juncture. And based on, as we're hemmed in, there's really nowhere for us to go to find more water.
So that's not, that's not accurate?
Okay.
That's not accurate. Today, we do not have the capacity to provide them, to provide a plan at this, this huge plan. We would not have the capacity, water or sewer, today to do that.
That makes sense, okay.
Does not mean in the future that we would not be able to do something to increase our water capacity and to increase the capacity of the sewer system, but that's huge amounts of money that it would take to do that. So I think we should just leave it at that.
Is there a separate, is there a different formula for like dormitories compared to residential or industrial?
Well, I haven't heard a different formula, but there was a formula that was to be used because they still have the dorm rooms or a sink and there was people and yeah, they have a, and I don't know what that formula is.
Does count, you know, how's that?
We use that as well for ours as well. You know, Gary has a number that each household, you know, uses a day, and that's what we kind of go by. And that's the standard. I think that's the same standard that county uses as well.
Javier only answered for himself. He did not say anything about her, whether she was going to be at MML. Yeah, I didn't think he did. I just looked at his email.
And I did not have any other emails other than, thank you, I look forward to meeting you next week. All right. So I will also reach out to them and find out what happened, and I will let each of you know. So I would expect they will want to be on future agenda.
It's gonna cost them.
And you'll notice that Gary spent a little briefing, provided a briefing for us.
That's what I was referring to before.
And I recognize some of the numbers in there, and it's not... I was not viewing their request as looking for approval in what we want to come and present, the first step, and come to the planning commission and?
Updates again.
More than updates because where we, I believe we left the meeting is that that would be the process they need to come through was to come to us with things, when they were at a point, because they had.
Sorry.
So?
I like that, too.
And again, these are not inexpensive. They spent some money on the architect and the planning and to put this together. And then there were, you know, the senior management of the school were involved in this, and they're now at a point.
I just got a text that says, directions for the TV are on the wall behind you.
I'm in. Yep, I'm in.
Somebody's watching?
Watch what you say.
Thank you, whoever.
I pulled up the email from Kyle from Springdale, and he said, thanks for the quick response and the availability today at 6:00. Before we confirmed the time slot, I wanted to ask if there was a way for the architect, so maybe because he heard nothing, they didn't take it as a confirmed time. But I saw nothing else from Carroll County Planning, right?
All righty. There will not be any updates. Oh, that slipped over Dave. There won't be any updates from Javier, obviously. So floor is yours, Dave, if you have anything?
Yeah, sure, a couple of things to let you all know. We did appoint a new council member at the last town council meeting. We had only one person put their name in to show interest in that open seat on the town council, and that was Joshua Wolf-Mallow, lives up in Snyder's Summit as well. Joshua put his name, this was the second time, he had put his name in when we appointed Connor Frock onto the council, when Tom Hubernadis stepped down. So he had shown interest prior, so we all felt pretty good about him when he came again. And so we're happy to have him. I was actually waiting to see because I thought he may be a good candidate for the, for our position here, but he chose to go with the town council, so. Mayor Kornick appointed our council committees, a few changes on it. I still have Public Works. Connor Frock has moved over and will be the chair of Water and Sewer. Public Safety will now be Dante Howard. Economic Development and Community Relations, that's a new name, that's going to be Joshua, our new member. And Community Engagement, Community Enhancement, I'm sorry, and Outreach, we've added the outreach portion at the request of Council Member Schultz. So she's continuing on with that one, but wanted to keep the outreach. She's kind of our Facebook and does the social media aspect of it, so she'll be doing those. Dana is creating HR-type policies for the town. So we had a couple of policies, but not everything documented, so she's been working on that. And at the last meeting she gave us, I don't know, there was like six or seven, and then there were some supplement documents that went along with that. So she's knocking, things like, you know, the uniforms for the Public Works and when they have to, you know, how they have to wear them, how they have to dress, how they get them purchased and things like that. You know, the cash, penny cash that we have, petty cash that we have here, and how it's used and replenished and things like that. So good stuff that we needed to have, so she's been taking care of those for us. So we've talked, I think the last time and maybe several times about our 211 High Street Building that, remember last time with the things coming down from Maryland? We were calling that kind of workforce housing and that that will fit what Maryland's kind of doing and we'll be able to use that. Well, in regards to that building, at our last meeting, town manager Di and Public Works Director Myers did an assessment of the building and briefed the council on some repairs and upgrades needed to that building. So the external parts of that building, since the town owns that building, that we're going to have to take care of, you know, we can put apartments in there and, you know, we have all that kind of stuff going, but we really need to make sure that everything from the foundation to the roof is solid to do that. And that was at the tune of their estimates of about 150K of things that needed to be looked at and done and whether they all, you know, they may all need to be done, you know, it's an old building, but, you know, they're just what they think estimates might be, so we don't really know for sure.
Does that side affect this side at all, since we're kind of connected?
No, we're not, we're not actually connected, the buildings, but no, it doesn't affect us, but it affects the town, obviously, because we'll have to come up with a way to make sure we fund that and get those things taken care of.
That's not designated like a historic where we could apply for grant like we did Atlee?
So we're looking at things like that, so maybe, it's not, not through the? Right, but maybe the Department of Housing and Community Development, there may be some opportunities for monies based upon what we're trying to do and things like that. It's not like a historic, designated a historic building that we would have to, you know, put every brick back or it's not on that kind of list, but it is in the Historic District of Town, so we do have, you know, some leverage that we can possibly use for grants. But we need to look into those things to make sure we're able to do that. And last thing I wanted to bring up, of course, you see that they started the main and High Street paving, so you're all living with that, so that'll be a couple more weeks and, you know, we had a really rainy start to it, so that was holding them up. But now we'll see how much they can work in this 100-degree heat, may hold them up a little bit as well. So that's what I had for you all tonight.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
And I started taking notes about who was going to have responsibilities, and so you probably said it, but I didn't hear it. Your role?
Public Works.
Public Works and Planning Commission.
Yeah, well, Planning Commission doesn't count as one of the council committees.
Oh, okay. Okay, but you'll still have that role?
Yes, yeah, that hasn't changed, right?
And second question, any, anybody showing interest for?
I have received nothing from anyone. You know, they were supposed to send stuff to me and you. I haven't seen anything for someone interested in the planning commission, so we need to beat the, maybe beat the bushes a little bit of someone that we can talk to and?
A quick refresher, I guess it's probably been about a year, maybe a little longer. We spent some time here talking about having a more of a formalized process because in the past, it was primarily Neil. Somebody would have approached him, says they're interested in being involved in the town in some way or another, or he noticed somebody that might be of some value. And absolutely nothing wrong with that, but wanted to make it a little bit more open to the public, and we had agreed to kind of have a listing somewhat of the responsibilities, but to go through the Facebook page of the town and have it listed out there is essentially an open position. And this is the first time that we really have done that, and there, obviously, if you want to be involved, maybe you're going to go out and look on that, so we have to revisit this, I don't know, but it's going to be up to us to kind of beat the bushes and see if we've got somebody.
Send out the newsletter? Can we put something in that?
We certainly, we certainly can put something in the newsletter since it's still ongoing. We were, we used the social media platform and it was published many times.
Because I like both. I read the news, I purposely, that gets, I'm excited when I get that.
Yeah, so it was published many times advertising this vacancy. And I did talk to the council when we first started this process about, reminded them about the transparency that we wanted and to put it out there. And we're doing, we did the same thing for the town council vacancy. So I mean, that is, what we proposed is the process that we're following. We just need to get some candidates.
We have two people from Snyder's Summit now on the council, correct? Maybe bring that up at the work session, maybe they might know somebody that, because we don't have somebody from that.
Summit here.
Yeah, I certainly, I certainly will bring that up at the town council meeting next week or the week after.
Actually, we're pretty good, because that means we've hit most of?
Yeah, we have Atlee Ridge, we have Blue Ridge, we have the reserve. Yeah, it would be, it would be good to get?
Someone to go bring up their HOA meetings.
Yes, so I can, I'll certainly bring it to their attention. And I'll, maybe I'll even just send them guys, those two guys, an email and ask them if they have anybody that they know that wants to get involved at a lower level capacity such as this.
Maybe, do they have HOA meetings, maybe?
They do.
So maybe whoever that, so might be able to just bring that up and say, hey, you know, there's an opportunity in the town if you want to?
Yep. Dante, Dante is on the homeowners and so is Josh. Josh, yes.
Okay. So? This is where we left off last month. And I was having, kept having this sidebar with Michelle when I was sitting over here. It's a little unsettling in here, sitting in a different spot, and Michelle kept looking. And just quickly, what I had given to everybody initially as a hard copy, none of the tables had been, we didn't really have much information for the tables. But I then handed something out, not expecting everybody to go back through your own notes that you'd already been working on, but most of the tables were updated now with information I got from the census. Javier gave me some information. Michelle did not have that. So she kept looking up here and looking at what she had, so then we're having these side things. So the screen will have the latest of there. There's still two of them that, oh, gosh, I gotta get Javier's help because he sent me something that's got lots of data out there, and I'm not exactly sure where to go find it, and I just ended up leaving it out. But, and it might be at the end of this, what might make most sense is that we get through the verbiage and we might want to have, one evening, we just kind of go through the stats, because most of the tables in here, there are paragraphs around that, but it's just talking about that table. And they're in the same spot they were before. I didn't take any artistry, I just updated the numbers and the content. But, so we left off at chapter four, and I think we also agreed last time, I will make this a little larger so that we can see it as we're talking. That might, that might help.
I have down we were chapter six.
Okay, so it was chapter six, okay.
I have it down, starting on chapter six.
Okay, okay. The computer just said you want to go to where you left off, so I guess I had not totally left chapter five, so maybe that's why. Okay, so chapter six, all righty.
Municipal growth.
And again, just as a reminder, your page numbers will not match up with this. The verbiage will, but the page numbers won't because I made a larger font since I was getting some proper comments, so, all right. I guess because we have, for the most part, Javier, Abigail, Christ, and I'm leaving somebody out, but we, that, I guess would be, we did have, we did develop this in conjunction with the county.
Yeah.
Okay. So item one, any changes? Item two? Yeah. I'm not so sure that, well, I think I did see with the BLI that I think Gary has commented that they haven't necessarily collaborated with us on it, we just, we're giving that.
So they did do a recent scrub of the BLIs?
Yeah, yeah. That's a good way to put it, too. That's a good way to put it, too. That's actually something that I'm struggling with a little bit because the credible tables that I got from the county, the inventory of commercial businesses is really hard to tell. With, cause obviously Babylon Vault is still out there, but I don't think that's in the town, that's not in our area, that's just outside. But that was in our last plan. And there are other things I don't recognize in there, so I just kind of need him to help me understand what the key is on that. But yes, I think that is a good term. They did do a scrub. Number three. I will highlight this. I will make sure these numbers match what's in the table that we have later on. Like I say, sixteen acres in R1 or R2. Cause the numbers surprisingly were different, more different than I would have expected. And especially when we get the things like houses that were built prior to nineteen thirty-five. I, I would expect the number would be the same, not higher. So, yeah, so.
Did you discover more houses?
Yeah, discovered. So, I, I, but they're, they're not, nothing major. I mean, even the census, I've got three different numbers from the census tables. So, you know, I, I've already talked with them and we're gonna agree on a number, the same one they're gonna use. And I'll just make sure this matches. Okay? Yep. Now, I'll do same thing with this. This, these are just. It's not a whole lot, yeah. Uh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that to you. Yeah, it was four point eight is what we had in the last one. So, we should be coming up on the table. Let me just roll to that. Wonder where it is. I guess it's in a different spot. I apologize. I don't make anybody sick by doing this. Yeah. So, just rolling down. Item four, Public Services Infrastructure. Let's see. Okay.
Yeah, don't we need to list the schools or?
I am going to step away from the ver- the verbiage. I don't need that one. That's an older version. And I have the tables. And then I just have inserted them in the same spot, so let me just go to those, cause they're in a little bit, I think, a little better order to look at. See, there's, there's the DL. Land cottage. There you go. Page forty-five. Different section, but they're, they're, it'll be in there. So, those, those are the enrollment numbers. In your book, like, these actual, these capacities were different, the state rated capacity. I, I believe the high school went up a little bit from what it was. Does any, anybody have anybody up there that would know that that grew? I, I've been around twenty years now and I haven't seen any growth to.
Well, they haven't had any bigger buildings, but perhaps they've put a few more desks in. I have no idea.
Yeah, that would just be about it, yeah. And.
Yeah, mine's passed that age for a good decade.
And I, 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 this is coming from Carroll County and it's in their master plan, so the, these are their numbers. And I, and I will distill this and make sure it matches with the word show in here. So, for public schools, what could we? Yeah. So, I don't, I don't actually even see any comments on here or striking of, of the verbiage that's in our original, what we started with and went, and pulled out. I can certainly.
So, you refer to table thirteen or?
Oh, yeah, but what, yeah, but in here, yeah, the, there is a paragraph in here and it talks about the number of students per dwelling unit. Yeah, number of people, you know, per household. And for whatever reason, we don't have that in the verbiage now. I could go and put that back in. Cause there's an off, I mean, we had quite a bit in there. I, it's funny, I, I don't, I don't have any notes on there, just some. Yeah, page fifty-eight is what's in the original plan. Or the two thousand and ten plan, both that way.
So, I had that we need that data. The verbiage that we have there, but we were, we needed to rewrite it.
Okay. Oh, and I have a note that Drew has a link. You know what? I'm just gonna put a comment on it. Let me work on. Cause there, there is a fair amount of information that came in from, that would, for this specific information came from whatever Carroll County's Department of Education, whatever. But they, they sent me a bunch of information. So, I will go and match this up. And maybe what I'll do is I'll have a comparison of two thousand and nine numbers versus the two thousand, I think this was twenty-four that they gave me. I'll see, it's on the table. Yeah, this is master, yeah, twenty-four numbers. It's from their master plan.
Yeah, that, that would probably include then some of the Snakers, maybe most of the Snakers Summit. There's, there's quite a few kids up there, you know, more kids than we've had in the neighborhood in a long time.
Well, let's see. There we go. So, the enrollment, so page ninety, if you have the last plan that was done. Page ninety has the similar chart. And you can see the enrollment at the high school was a heck of a lot more when this was taken from two thousand and five data. Twelve thirty-three at the high school and it's nine oh six. State rated capacity actually decreased, so I did that wrong. And I know we're talking about a different middle school. Elmer Wolf is from five oh four up to five forty-six. The, how many units are in Snyder Summit?
It's like one fourteen?
Hundred twenty, I think it's a hundred twenty-eight.
Okay. Cause obviously we would not have had that back there. I can do something, of course, even then, because these numbers would have factored in the whole community, though. And when they talk about capacity, and, and it's irregardless of whether it's a fifty-five plus or not, I believe. I think it's all the, the dwellings. I'll find out. Uh, uh, that, let me, I'll, I'll work on this one. Yeah. I said, I think Emily's moved. Alrighty. Apologize. Not like Excel. How do I get a crawl? There we go. Anything on public safety?
I would reclaim the word that her EMS staffing is now county.
I don't know what concurrency management. Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
It's a whole bunch of tables, one response time, the business.
Well, would it make sense that, because definitely when this was written, we did not have the, was the EMS still volunteer calling as opposed to having a full-time staff back in twenty-ten?
Yeah, we were, we were paid, we were paid.
Oh, oh, really?
We, we paid, the FARC company has paid out of their pocket.
Okay.
And now it's just recently switched to county, their county employees now.
Right, that, now, okay. So, what, what, so what's different, what do you want me to put into this?
Well, I think, well, did we cover that earlier? Well, you know, I just don't always say that the EMS staffing is now county.
And just say it that way? Cause they're not even talking about the average annual, this, this EMS.
I mean, that's still.
It still applies, yeah.
That still applies, Mark.
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
But it, it probably would not hurt for us to put in there that EMS.
EMS. EMS and, and a FATO is one of the drivers, is they're paid county, uh, DFM.
Okay, so it would be just all EMS staff are paid, are county paid employees?
Yeah, yeah, E- EMS.
So, I think it could be a, a new sentence, Mark, just like the one below. It talks about police protection.
Sure.
It's, but there should be EMS.
EMS staffing.
And police protection.
No, this is just EMS now.
EMS.
There's a staffing.
Police one coming up. And one, what do they call them, FATOs?
I don't know what that, what that word is.
Far, far apparatus emergency, uh, far apparatus operator driver, but you can just, just put driver.
Yeah.
And one FARC, R. County.
County paid employees? County funded employees?
Department of Emergency, Department of, it's DFM, it's an acronym, but.
Well, just tell me the acronym and I'll figure it out. Or, or.
The, the, the Department of FARC and Emergency Management.
Our county DFM employees.
Sounds good.
Yeah, employees.
Yeah, okay. County paid.
DFM, S, Department of FARC and Emergency.
So, it's. Emergency Management Services?
Just Emergency Services.
Okay. And I think just, and since that's probably the only time we're mentioned, that's why I figured I'd sit, I'd go with the acronym, just put it to you. I, and I believe that we've cut that down to just that one sentence for police protection. Is it protection or services? Protection is it?
Probably services, I think.
Yeah. Alrighty, Water and Sewerage Facilities. Pretty humdrum area, nothing going on there.
Those math numbers right now are ten. I had written the paper ten and eleven now.
Uh, I can check that real quickly. Yeah, it's, I tried, I should open that up too for the, when they appear. Come on. There we go. Environmental Services, okay, Water and Sewer, nine and ten, that's what they currently are. Yep, nine and ten. Darn, I don't have my list of, I don't know if anybody, Drew, are these yours in here? These are the maps?
Yeah, all of those now, I think they're all, I think it's.
Yeah, they look like the new pretty ones. You've been playing with them. Those aren't in here. Those aren't in here.
Oh.
So she, that's what I got. I thought that I had these in order. You know what, I might go bother you back, because at the end of this. Yeah, I'll make sure the maps, you know, that, because I keep updating the glossary and, yeah.
And how many gave us may have, and maybe I'll put them.
Did you have them, something different? Either way.
These are the ones.
Okay, so those are the pretty ones.
Yeah, or, I just forgot it. I can't remember well.
Yeah, I got nine is water. Ten is sewer. Okay.
Is that what we're using? Do you have it highlighted together in two thousand and nine?
Yeah, actually I did, she, from here, everything we're doing from here on to these were just Emily's. So I can check that pretty easily because I just got the BLI.
Still land in the torrent, right?
Yep. Oh, I can just look at the table we just looked at and I'll bore everybody as I go through this. So it's twenty twenty-three BLI, okay? Highlighted just to make sure we have. I think, I heard ninety-six thousand seems great, doesn't it?
I was trying to look at that, I think that's correct, I guess.
They were just showing those numbers. Is this, this newsletter is showing the deficit of one sixty-four? In this thing. Think I should change it to that or it's?
That's their latest numbers, I guess.
Yeah. Based on twenty twenty-three water service area. I don't know what the.
Now, these figures, does the town supply the town with some, some burn figures stuff?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Does the town provide the county with some figures on, you know, gallons per day used? So they reformulate, because I noticed there's something used more than what, what they anticipated, right? And.
Well, I believe that's part, we're, you know, they're coming to talk about with this because I know that, I don't know if it was Wayne and Gary or, but I know that they interact with them for their annual plan. And I believe that's what this is.
For that, for that figure to go up.
I know, I know Gary has the numbers, Gary and Wayne, they're on, they're on that.
Yeah.
And I know the county was using the BLI, which we didn't think was correct. And that's why Gary and Wayne met with them, they did a walk through of that and tried to get that as active as possible, so Jerry. But I don't know if the county uses sort of figures or they, or do they use standard.
The increase in the deficit, maybe, I mean, reevaluate it.
I'm sure Gary and I have talked his head over that.
I want to think this number one sixty-four was New Windsor, since it has the other municipalities, but it could be the G A B. I don't, I don't know. Because the next page then has the waste.
I don't know if our best bet would be to ask Gary to take a look at that number, you know, at that.
Yep. I agree.
Because, you know, some of the stuff is, is, you know, we was talking about the treatment plan, that's all. And then you go to twenty twenty-seven, which is just around the corner, we, you know.
That was removal of Snyder, inclusion of the HOFF, will that change? From here to that, figures.
And I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know how I can go about that at this point because, although we did that, it's not approved, you know, safety and food. And I don't know, you know, I can do that. Because to save the town council, so no, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
Then those numbers will be wrong if we updated them. We don't update them and they agree to it, then I guess the numbers are wrong again.
Yeah.
But adding to the tables. So Mark, that's a really good question that Drew brought up. Considering we're increasing our growth area boundary by the inclusion of the HOFF property. The numbers. I could almost like being to have both sets of numbers come out with it. So when this goes for further review.
Well, I, I feel like because we've, I wanted us to kind of have that discussion so we could say, okay, because I think these maps need to be changed. Because if we're going to be doing this plan and be presenting in the council, that growth area boundary now has to be expanded and reduced for, you know, what we have for the Snyder piece and expanded for the HOFF piece, yeah.
That needs to happen in our final document.
Yes.
So that means our final document should have updated numbers to reflect water resources for adding that.
Yes. And I don't know where we go with this in relation to the other agenda item we had tonight. Whether we need to do anything with that.
Yeah, that's another one, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't have the agenda item, it didn't occur, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, we, obviously there will always be items that are ongoing. But it's big enough. It doesn't change however we measure what these numbers are. I mean, it's, it's red. It's not green and it's not even close to being green. So that's, that's the real message with that other property and the same thing with, with the HOFFs. You know, this is the reality, but, you know, that's got to be something jointly worked on.
But we, we're going to need to add that to the map.
And.
Because we voted on that to include, so that's going to be included in our map. And then, you know, maybe that's something at the art can help us.
I, I haven't said this in a long while, but I miss when we did this the last time, where we had somebody from Carroll County planning that was helping guide us along in how these moving parts fit together. Because obviously we have to draw a line in the sand somewhere so we can get this thing finished. But, you know, this is one of those sections that will change, obviously these maps change.
We have to do that.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just going to highlight this whole area and we're just going to have to have a.
Okay, we could ask, maybe we can ask Gary and Wayne to review with that.
Absolutely, that's, that's, yes.
You know, just sit down with them to.
Well, I'm going to reach out to Javier and say, you know, because we, he's going to be the one that's got to facilitate this changing. Now, what would be his suggestion on how we go and resolve then the water and the waste and the numbers that we're going to put into here now that we're revising this? So. And I, I don't know if that's somebody from Carroll County working with here, and I'm assuming it's Javier, but I don't know if he facilitates it or not. But, yeah, so I'm going to put. That's Javier. So I'll coordinate that.
Because that would require the county to change their maps, you know.
Yeah, well, we require the county to change their maps after the document is approved, approved, not prior.
So, and, and that sequencing, if we're going to be putting this together to go to the council for approval, would, do we change these or do we not, these, these maps not get changed until? To me, I think that maps need to be changed.
We have to, we have to change them, we have to give them the document as if this is what we want.
This is our recommendation.
This is our recommendation, exactly. And then they can say, yay, hey, yes, this part, that part, whatever. And then we'll have to drop back and fix those things and then move forward with the finished product.
One of the things that I was figuring is at a minimum, an attachment for the council, but maybe even as part of this plan, here are some significant changes from the last time.
Absolutely.
Like the, the HOFFs, the Snyder, and obviously what we do here. Okay, yeah. I think we're going to be going into twenty-six. Yeah. I did tell the previous mayor I was going to try to get this, so he'd be able to get a signature on it, but it ain't going, it obviously didn't happen. But we have to do it during this current mayor's. We have to get this done. Yeah. I, I think the same thing here with the sewage, you know, I'll just have to, it'll be Javier, Gary, Wayne. I'll reach out to you all about this. I know that early on when we were doing this, and it might even been this section, Gary had provided some input early on when we were doing the review. So I'll see if I can find that, because I think, I think it might have even been briefings like this, that he gave some information, his view of make sure we get this addressed. As I don't see any notes from Emily Ann, because I know there was a time that we were having to, you know, what? That was back before Emily Ann, this was when we had that person from the state. Boy, we've had a lot of.
I think that's been our drawback, it's just the turnover at the county level.
I'm going back to the beginning.
Well, the guy from the state, yeah, I mean, he was.
You, I don't think you were with us when we did this the first time. The person that ran this and, 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 don't worry about this, and the Sukka D state was Barbara Lilly from Carroll County planning. And as you recall, early on, we did not have somebody to do that, and then we did get somebody that, Neil Brown won, got somebody from the state, he came to a couple of meetings with us, and then he had the number two in the State Department of Plan, he came here to the meeting and said, man, that's not going to happen anymore. And that's when we went to get Emily Ann, and I think that was right around the time we were doing this. And it was up to us to try to pull this together without the input from the county.
Hey, I, when we started this. Yeah, where's the Tarteau look?
I found Javier to be most responsive, so I'm sure he'll help with this. I guess the same thing with storm water management? See, I don't know. I got no notes on.
The only thing I have is on that paragraph under storm water management where it says the mayor and council adopted the W R E. I have a note, and I think that's because Michelle said that the town does not adopt that regulations are applicable to the town. We don't get to pick and choose.
Otherwise, like in the code, I guess, when they're figuring that out.
I, I have a note updated as opposed to adopted.
How about, yeah, or it was developed? How about, yeah, or it was developed on April seventh, is that the, or?
I'm, I'm sure it's more recent than that.
Yeah.
That's what this is. The, the twenty twenty-four R W R E. That's what they were here to talk about with us.
Maybe we should say something like the. Develop the W R E for the New Windsor Municipal Growth Area and do, and work diligently to meet those expectations or?
I don't think this is done annually.
Okay.
This, this W R E.
No, it takes several years.
Yeah. About the town of New Windsor and Carroll County regularly update W R E for the New Windsor Municipal Growth Area. And then the mayor and council adopted the most recent W R E. And I think that's what this is ultimately leading to.
Oh, okay.
When she was gonna come and talk with us.
Okay.
The point there is I don't think that we adopt.
Right, yes.
So the, the word adopt is not the right word.
Foster.
Most recently accepted the updated.
Yes.
And I'll go. And I'm just gonna keep this, because. It, it, we're, we're moving towards, towards that and I, I, I'm sure this W R E will be done before this plan.
Yeah, he's probably right.
Most likely.
Hey, we resemble that remark.
It is.
There's two ways to look at this. There's perseverance for sticking it out for this long through all the iterations of personnel that have been. Working on this or the, the, the self, I don't know what there's a word for it, when you keep being yourself. That I keep going through because it's taking so long and we, we were saying we didn't wanna take, take along with it. But I'm going with the perseverance. That's, that's where I am now. Recreation. Okay. That one should be a little bit more pleasant to go through. Okay, I'm just. Oh, there we go, okay.
South Park.
You say Fountain Park.
They have listed the War Memorial. You can sit there and play check or your chess if you bring your own.
Oh, yeah, it brings the board, so.
Yeah.
So. So it would just be High Street War Memorial and Fountain Park? Okay. This is just a listing. And how about, and the most recently added? The ball fields are all still available. For public, for the community rec over at the. It's not the New Windsor Middle School, obviously, at the Springdale Prep, it'll be the rec council.
I think it's a line, so they throw it up. The lines.
Line of all fields that we've always called.
Yeah, the, the ones at Springdale, I don't think are used to West Carroll sports.
Okay.
I think rugby is still there.
I see a lot of activity out there and it's not the school.
Yeah, I don't know who all uses that much on West Carroll.
Okay.
They're using, yeah, a lot of them, they're using one of those.
So I think this whole section needs to be rewritten then.
We got funding for the half court, that grid, but that's not.
It doesn't have the skate park one here. Still a skate park, right?
Yeah, 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 it's still.
And there's a frisbee.
Yeah, that's where, that's there.
The, it's called.
Do you mind just brainstorming and tell me what's there and I'll put it together into something?
It's, it's, it's in here.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, yeah. Skate park's there, the frisbee golf, golf is there. I think the only thing that was missing was that part.
Well, we got approximately eighteen and a half acres of recreational ball fields on the New Windsor Middle School parcel. That's not. That's not correct.
That is correct and it is not correct.
Yeah, that's right. And actually, the very beginning of it talks about the ball fields adjacent to the wastewater.
Ball fields are still there, it's just not the New Windsor Middle School. Do we wanna call it the Springdale Prep?
Uh, uh, you know, I, I just assumed that was part of, I, I don't know who accesses those. I don't know if that's part of Springdale or not.
Well, it talks about. Though this property may be purchased by the current leasur.
Uh huh.
So it's, it, it's.
So just leave it like that. Okay, that's a good point.
That it is not, but, and it could be purchased and gone. But, you know, I'm assuming because it's still the county owned, that that's how rugby still uses it.
Yeah, maybe like former New Windsor Middle School parcel.
Okay, and it is unclear what access may be afforded if that happens. Okay.
I asked to walk my dog there and they don't give us a hard time.
I take kids over there and fly kites.
Yeah.
I've gotten grief.
Oh, you've gotten grief for flying kite?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
We walk our dog, I thought we'd pick it up. I've never.
Was at the time, who was sitting in a Mercedes watching me.
I've never been approached.
Bys, uh, to be there.
I've yet to be approached.
Yeah.
And I'm there a lot and I wave.
Yeah, I, I kinda did that too.
Cause that's, cause that's who I am.
Where the lagoons were removed. You mentioned I ended up possible future.
Maybe just another paragraph of potential.
But you don't know how much.
Because there's also the potential of, of the walking trail with this donated. Snyder property.
I don't think you work itself, but a whole lot. The walk, recreational trail. Says maybe for, I mean, Snyder Summit, that's in, big, getting used.
Are there passive, additional passive?
Walking trails go down behind Old Boy Scout Park and comes across their hillside.
The old Boy Scout Park, yeah, okay, yeah. You know where that is, right, Dave?
I, I was about to say what?
How many here? Put your hand. I know where the old Boy Scout are. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, they had picnic tables and they had a stone fireplace with the great view. Yeah, Boy Scouts used to camp.
Between the other four of us, we have at least eighty years of living here. There's none of where it's what's up, okay. All right. Anything else for in there? I'll go and work in here, something about, that's my note.
That would be the council to accept that or anything?
Yes. Yeah, that part.
Yeah.
Do we wanna mention anything in here about the, the fact that we had that circuit rider that. Works on grants for parks? I mean, that seems to be a, a, a. An area that he's had some success in getting some funding for the town. I guess with the project open space.
Yes, I'm sorry, three, yes.
Sure.
This is, I mean, we're now in anticipated financing mechanisms of support. Do we want to mention? Here, as I see her note, significant items on that plan and. Cause I, I know I've seen at council meetings that, that periodically there's a discussion of the, the listing of capital improvement items. Is this a place we might maybe not necessarily get too specific in, in, in amount, but you know, something like. You know, multimillion dollar. Waterline replacement or, you know, new pumping station or a, any, any kind of things like that do we wanna put in here or?
I don't know. Sometimes it's better to be just a little.
Okay.
That, that would kind of date the plan.
Right, yeah, that's what.
Yeah, yeah.
Change anything, come up dated, it's just lets you know that we do have a, got a group planned.
Do, do we wanna say any, like a significant items include? You know. Replacement of the hundred year old water line.
Do we wanna say things like such projects covered by this have been? And let them know, do it that way to give them an idea of what it covers? Which would have been our wastewater.
What's your definition of capitals? Anything over five thousand dollars? Is that what the town has? That's, that's. It's not a new wastewater treatment plant. I don't think that purple at the end of the first paragraph is incorrect. I think that's. Helps the county understand costs associated, even though we don't, we very seldom we put a, a cost. But this second paragraph isn't true and we shouldn't be in here. That's old. And the sewage system upgrades where they were doing the, I assume that means the lining that was being done.
Where do you see that?
Oh, it's right, right. The first line talks about the restructure fees cover the new wastewater treatment plant. I think that, that should go.
Right.
Okay, then the second sentence is what I was kinda. Sewage system upgrades currently being undertaken.
Restructure to feed for.
Yes, but that's not what this is talking about.
Back then, it was. Re, that's, that's the infamous water bill going up so much per month and I was starting to build a, a fund to be able to. Help the long-term capital projects for the town.
Oh, okay.
Really just talking about wastewater.
Oh, okay, okay.
Treatment, how we were gonna pay for it.
The council want upgrade, so I would do upgrade.
Do, yes.
I don't see where, yeah, I'm reading now to be able to.
Could say something like for the past, pick a number for the past decade. Uh, the town restructured their water and sewage fees to be able to provide for. You know, to begin providing for these long-term infrastructure. So it's kinda like reversing that instead of in anticipation. Is it a new pumping station or refurbished or what's the right word? Is it a new um pumping station or refurbished or what's the right word for the? Yeah, because ob- obviously, you know, we just did a the new pumping station on thirty one or something with thirty one.
All new.
Is that all new?
Or no, well, it was upgraded.
Okay, upgraded, okay, that's where I upgraded and the pumping station in here was upgraded a while ago, wasn't it? Yeah, I mean, obviously since this plan was done.
Yes, and you got down here to end.
Yeah. So that's why I'm saying to facilitate related capital infrastructure expenditures like uh refurbishing uh existing uh uh pumping stations. And I don't know if there's a second something we could put in there. Aren't we paying for some of the water line work here? Or is it all the state now?
The water line was funded through the state.
Because what was that, something the town had to do in in before the state would start doing?
You're thinking about the streetscape project, we got to have the water line done before the streetscape.
Oh, okay, how about the like the relining that we have to?
Reline the sewer.
Right, okay.
And replace the water lines.
Okay.
And that had to be done prior to the state doing our streetscape project.
So what I was trying to do with this is link those because I I like kind of the idea that Drew said, it's talk about for the past decade, I got any restructure water and sewage and we use those funds for and give examples of some of the things because we had those funds available to deal with some of those capital improvement items like the refurbishing of the uh the uh pumping stations and relining the water line, yes, sure.
So you got a lot of revenue from the permits for a Snyder Summit, help with that, didn't it?
Paying a little help fund water problems, yes, absolutely. Whether it's pumping stations, whether it's relining, yes.
For the past decade the town has used the restructured water and sewage fees facilitated related capital infrastructure. And go back to costs like upgrading the pumping stations and relining the wastewater lines.
I was just thinking if we should add something about um you know, a lot of these things we do are to remain current with the Maryland Department of Environment's say changing uh as they um mandate entire tighter restrictions on, yes, we have to continuously do things to be able to meet the Maryland Department of Environment's regulations.
About this to meet M D E guidelines?
Guidelines, yes.
Without being too heavy handed.
Trying not to be, I don't want to.
Yeah, exactly.
They have, that's and we have to meet those, so sometimes we got to change stuff, we got to upgrade stuff, we got to do things ensure that we are meeting those regulations.
Which which is kind of the the thing that's in your face, but there's also the aging infrastructure, and I mean, it's it's, yeah.
We probably have more water and sewer projects than will ever have money to, we just have to keep.
Now, like when they rely, does anyone get the enterprise fund? I'll do that, any of that. See that's strictly for maintenance and.
Yes. Operation of water and sewer system. That's self sufficient.
Yeah.
Yeah. That has to be self sufficient. And we have, we scroll money away, repair.
I didn't know whether the to help with the I N I with the sewer.
Yes, that will, that will come on there. Typically, don't pull much of general funds. Those kind of ones.
The town proactively seeking to have future expansion in the infrastructure. Is it really expansion of infrastructure or upgrading or uh replacing?
Wouldn't call it expansion.
Right.
We are upgrading our infrastructure.
Proactively seeking infrastructure.
So it's kind of proactively upgrading the M D E guidelines.
I I the development process, I don't know what that means. Yeah. How about just the town is proactively seeking infrastructure replacement and or upgrade funding? Just leave it at that. Yeah.
Yeah, you need to. They, you don't go out looking for spend money. Does they tell you?
Well, no, in our in our infrastructure, yes, the, you know, the water lines and we aren't, you know, proactive, I don't know, seeking is the right word, we know what we have to. I think it was not about seeking funding, you know.
Yeah.
Funding, yes, and we are always on that.
Is this true, efforts are underway to examine and implement additional fees? Including development impact fees? Plan review and appeal fees?
So we have done those things. So the the efforts.
Efforts will continue to examine.
Yeah, I mean, you could say that.
Okay.
I mean, because we do look and and we adjust as necessary to the impact fee and things like that.
Yeah, so developer rights and responsibilities would say recently.
Yeah, yes. We we have an impact fee scheduled for the area and way it created that goes out through the years and there's a a graduated increase to that and those impact fees reflect what's going to cost to cook out a new house if two part water resources.
Okay. Typically a combination general fund of town general funds and state monies from agencies such as H R U are used to implement capital projects.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's true, that next sentence, or next, okay, rural buffers and transition areas. I don't think that's changed. This uh highlighted area. I guess that's a favorite property there across from the uh old middle school.
Yes.
That's still.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's the G A B.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Floating ten acres, someday could do something.
And I think that there needs to be a section here on the half property. Since we're including that now on the G A B or we're recommending that be included. I don't remember how many acres that is out, if I would look at their papers. I'm gonna say it was two hundred acres, does that sound right?
Sounds right, yes.
Yeah, you remember the old Eastonburg old house? There there was a house, it was sitting like all the trees. It's across from.
Yeah, it's the middle of the school.
It's always across that little parking area.
There you go.
Down here on seventy five.
There you go, Dave, right here on this map. Middle school.
Four pot and there's a shed there, a wooden shed.
This is the grounds where the middle school is or the old middle school, I think you were here for that, where where Springdale is leasing.
So this is it right here?
No, that pink thing.
Oh, this right here?
Yeah.
That's ten acres?
Yeah. He was looking at uh once it was, once we heard it was like a sheet or something like that. It was, there was discussions like that going on.
There was a food line, it was.
Yeah, that was early, then then there were rumors of a negotiation going on with one of the uh
Yeah.
No, we were saying like no more than four pumps, the, again, oh, that's what we were kind of chatting about.
Mike, I don't have it here.
Yeah, I I know I got it home in my folder from last month's meeting.
Okay, I just. Is it farm?
No, it's just a field, right?
It's a home of trees, there was a house there one time. Eastonburg's house.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Ten acres.
It's it's not that far from the old uh Boy Scout camp.
True, I am, I don't know where any of that is. I can find that Boy Scout camp.
Trampala.
What's it called, Tramp?
Trampala.
That was one of the nine gas stations that were here in town.
I don't know.
I keep hearing that come up, I couldn't figure out.
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't give the.
The field directly across from the school.
If there's anything.
That is.
I thought I saw it on one, or maybe just he had said it, I'll I'll save it. Well, it'd be easy enough to reach out to him and say I want, we want to put in there. Sooner or later Javier's gonna have to get some information to redo the maps. Because he has copies of what they gave us. It's ten of eight, do we want to start on transportation? Okay, I got, I got a rousing vote of support too. All right, um next month's meeting, let's see, did I, is it on the agenda? Anyway, Monday, July twenty eighth. Is that good kind of for everybody with what you know right now? We haven't really had a problem in, I want to say, two years now, but we need to have four people for a quorum. So we're sitting here at five, so that's great, uh since we're down one and this is also the summertime. If you would please reach out to me, yeah, and you, my and and let me know, because I know all of you have have my number, uh there's also my right now, I'm still using my personal email address. But please reach out and let me know if you're not going to be able to make the meeting, don't wait for the agenda and stuff to come out, I mean, we all have lives, it's okay. But we, I want to, I don't want to have a show up and and not, especially because we're probably gonna have guests and there there are topics even and uh I only have three of us here and it would be a relevant meeting.
I know I'll be here.
I would think I'm going to be here. There's a small chance. But.
And then the next one after that's August twenty fifth, so I thought, same thing with that. Not this, heads up National Night Out Tuesday, August twelfth and of course music on the main first Saturday of October. So um any other announcements, when's the next uh Bingo with with Drew's world famous Meatloaf?
Craft feed September fourteen.
Oh, there's. Tickets still available?
Uh, yeah.
Excellent. That's a really good time and that's.
That was late, was it? Uh, no.
Because I've, each time I've gone.
September.
Yeah, but it's really hot and I just, yeah, but, yeah, good.
Wine special. On Saturday or. That's that's down to one day.
We'll start with chapter seven. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Kevin, second by.
Right here.
Right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And who oppose, the ayes have it, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.